Okay, good evening everyone. It's 5:01 PM. I'd like to call to order the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2019. So I am seeking a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public and student comment. Okay, there is not anybody listed for public and student comment. So we'll move on to agenda item number four, annual academic standards. And this is to you, Tom.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Well, each year, according to DPI regulations, we need to post on our website for all people what standards we will be using in the district. And so it needs to be approved formally through the Board of Education. And included in your packet was a link to the DPI website where all the standards are listed. And we will be following the state standards for all of our standards this year. Just a couple of things. The English Language Arts reading/writing standards are still common core. They are from 2011, but they are this summer in the process of beginning a review of those. So a year from now, we may be looking at a few changes. But for this year, we'll still be sticking with those. Math is also common core. At this point, there isn't really any movement to change away from those. The science was actually updated in 2017. And this last year, we worked on developing an implementation process in the district for all those standards. Especially when you get to the high school, there's a lot of intricacies of where things are covered and who has those standards in their particular discipline. And so we worked a lot on that, but those were new in 2017. And the social studies standards were actually new for 2018, 19. And the DPI has a three-year implementation plan. This first year was just to get them out to everyone so that people could take a look, understand, because there were some significant changes. This next year is kind of a beginning phase of implementation. Our middle school and high school teachers are already at work on that. And then the following year would be full implementation. And some of the middle school teachers are going to be working with some of our elementary teachers to make sure that we can implement what is needed there at the elementary level.
So, Tom, I see in this proposed motion that social studies has just geography and history listed parenthetically. Is that...
That's basically because that's the way the DPI defines it. There's more in there than that.
Right, okay.
You know, you go through the website, there's a lot more there.
And this is just the floor. We can always add.
Mm-hmm. These are basically the minimum that's what we're following so far. And then we can, as a local, we can move it forward for what we need in our control here.
Right.
Any questions? Any comments for Tom?
It's gonna be done.
Okay. Well, then I'm seeking a motion to approve academic standards in math, English Language Arts, reading and writing, science, and social studies, geography and history, for use in the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, next, uh, thank you, Tom. Next on the agenda is in-district transfer process. And this will be Angie presenting.
Good evening. I'm bringing the in-district transfer form back in front of you. I brought the policy a while ago, a few months ago. And I don't believe this would be a policy change. It would just be a change to the in-district transfer form. So you have that in front of you. And what I am suggesting is on the elementary form, getting rid of this bottom section right here where they're able to write in a reason. So we've defined that at the elementary level, really, it's per IEP team decision, and that would only be if a student was in the care program or medically fragile program. Those are the only two programs that we have that are different at any of our elementary schools. All other considerations would be considered special considerations. We don't have any other educational reasons that are different at each elementary school. So what I've been finding throughout this year is that once a parent fills out this form and fills out this section down here, doesn't matter the reason, they assume that then it will be approved. And it's, I'm finding that it's breaking relationships. It's giving parents a bad taste in their mouth because then I have to call them and tell them that, no, it's not approved. And that is very frustrating to families. What I'm suggesting is taking that off, so it was, we would still keep moving into the attendance area in the first one to nine weeks and moving mid-school year. And all other considerations, they would directly call me. I feel like a conversation in person right away would be better than having them fill this out and going through the process.
And then you recommend keeping that for secondary because there are educational differences between the high schools?
Yes.
I think that's a really good compromise. And I think I'm the one that said, you know, I didn't like it that it was just so black and white and that there are times when parents, because of childcare, other issues, divorce, they just have to have a different, um, they just have to have a different accommodation. So directly taking it to you and leaving the school, not the bad guy, I think that's a good alternative. And that's fine with me. Because I'm sure if they present it to you, what I'm thinking, some of them will say, you'll say, then we'll try to work it out instead of saying absolutely not, so.
Right. And sometimes we don't do it. I mean, the objective is really to keep students at their home schools for many, many reasons, but sometimes it just doesn't work. And if we have that personal conversation, that's easier than trying to go through this process.
So Angie, if you're finding that there's an assumption that completing the form will result in the request, would it also help you on this form where it says reason for request to put an asterisk and then maybe something at the bottom referencing the policy, saying something along the lines that, you know, there's no guarantee, this is just a request, please see policy, and then citing the policy?
It would, yes. I think people still assume that it will be granted.
They have a good reason.
Well, you know, just, just having it, those two points gives them the impression when they read through it, say, it's not this and it's not this, that they don't have a solid reason.
Right.
But again, some verbiage saying, you know, requesting that they call you would be helpful in the form as well.
So does every parent receive a contact with you if they don't select the moving reasons?
No, I get a lot of these.
Oh.
A significant amount. So to have that personal conversation with each person...
Okay.
Is not possible. And I find it's a lot easier for parents to fill this out rather than calling and talking, you know, talking to somebody. I think it would diminish the amount that I have as well.
Okay.
And really get the parents calling me who, you know, have no other childcare, no other way of getting their child to school unless if they go to a specific school, which we do have those cases. And some of these, like where they want to go to a school because their friends go there, those types of things might go away if they personally call me.
So just the important ones will come to you?
I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I'm seeking a motion to approve an updated elementary in-district transfer form for use beginning July 1st, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Wisconsin OPEB Trust Investment Policy Statement.
I'll take this one. This is a follow-up from action that you took a week ago, I think it was. I hear you two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, in the Wisconsin OPEB Trust, we just hired a new investment advisor for the Wisconsin OPEB Trust, the consortium that we belong to. They need an investment policy statement. They need a statement from me that says, what we're asking them to do within those investments is consistent with our policies. It's not action that you need to take. You already took action on the policies themselves. But I've shared with you in board book the two policies that could affect investments. One of them is investments in general, and one of them is specifically with OPEB. And we have to have a board policy that creates the separate OPEB account in our district and what it's designated for, other post-employment benefit funding. And then the policy statement itself, the policy statement, the investment policy statement is shared in board book also. It's not a policy, it's just a statement asking the investment advisor to remain consistent with our policies. You might notice towards the end, there are four different model portfolios. We tend towards the conservative end. It's not ultra-conservative, but it's the next most conservative investment structure. And that's consistent with our policy that says liquidity is very important, preservation of principal is important, and pursuing returns or yield is third on that list. So we maintain the liquidity that we need, we maintain preservation of our principal, and then we pursue yield. And we do that with the investment advisor we selected two weeks ago, PMA, Prudman Advisors. One of the difficult things that we're working through right now is we're changing policies. So I don't want to have this be developed in the wrong way, but the new policies that we developed with NAOLA's help will have to be consistent with the two old policies and the investment policy statement. And if they do differ in any way, we'll just have to change the investment policy statement. But in looking at what NAOLA is already recommending for these two policies, I think we can remain consistent. You will see more of this in the next few months when we work on the policies themselves. There will still be two policies, one investment policy and one OPEB policy, and we'll make sure that there's consistency. So no action needed on this. I can answer any questions that you have.
All right, thanks, Bob. All right, next item on the agenda, item seven. This is outsourcing substitute staffing. Carla.
You know, if you wouldn't mind me, just a brief introduction to this. So two things. One, process. And then Carla and Tammy did a nice job of getting all the potential vendors for this outsourced service. I was able to attend two of the interviews. Good conversation, so thank you for the process. And secondly, just a, just a little bit of experience. I'm in favor of outsourcing services when certainly the service can be improved, there's no additional cost, and it treats people well. And, and I think we, you're going to hear some, all three of those tonight. I've had really good experience with outsourcing because it's a, it's a group that focuses on that task. It's not one of a hundred, right, that our own people have to do. So I just wanted to put that out there so you kind of know, you know, I've had some experience with it. It was a really good process. And unless, if there's not questions for me, I'd then turn it over to Carla.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
So some of you are probably wondering, what does outsourcing the substitute program really mean? It's simply stated, we would collaboratively work with an outside company to help manage the day-to-day functions of the substitute program. And unanimously, our team, which consisted of Bob Test, Noel Torson, Keith was involved in a couple of interviews, Tammy and myself, we unanimously voted that parallel employment was our choice vendor. And incidentally, we look at this every few years, just to look at the feasibility. Is it the best move to outsource, or would it be better to keep internally? We made the choice to outsource this year, basically because there's a lot of things that these companies can do for particularly parallel education group that we cannot do ourselves. Secondly, things have changed a little bit with our substitute staff. I don't know if you've probably have heard, maybe somebody has talked about, you know, there's a shortage of substitutes. We have felt that this year. We went from an average of 93% fill rate, which is excellent, was the best fill rate in a large area. We do, we typically test that with our other school districts to find out, what's your fill rate? You know, and we try to, we're always trying to do better. We went to 89% this year. It was a tough year. Our attendance, our absences increased by 12%. And it was just hard to get substitutes this year. And we had more subs this year than we ever had. But as you all know, the beauty of substituting is flexibility, right? You always can't get a substitute on the days that you need a substitute. And so it takes a lot of effort to call everybody. So we prevent the system, so to speak, work it out where you have an actual person rather than relying on electronic system, where you're saying, hey, I know you got a phone call from ASOP, but could you please help us out? You get to the point where you're almost on your knees saying, we really need you today. No, we don't need you. Our students need you. And really appealing to them. So what we're looking for is somebody that can do this all day, every day. We don't have the staff, to be quite honest, to be able to give the attention that's needed to get that 89% back up there where it needs to be. But what can it, what can they do for our subs? I'm talking about us, and I certainly don't want to come across as saying this is all about us. It's not. It certainly is about the students. But it's also about the substitutes. What can parallel education do that we can't? They can provide healthcare benefits. They can provide a 401K. Substitutes, because they're a non-educational entity, can collect unemployment during the summer. Never can that happen through a school district. They will be able to provide more professional training for our substitutes. That's always a struggle for us. They have the ability, they'll give the substitutes the ability to accept jobs on their device for free. Right now, our subs pay Jobulator a rate. They pay to go to work. It's only $6, $7 a month, but it's still out of their pocket. And that's something through the technology that parallel education has that would be free to them. They get paid weekly. That's unheard of. And for our subs, I think that would be very important. They have a referral bonus program. If they refer somebody, they get a bonus for referring them. And I think that's very powerful. It's a very powerful tool that they can use. And we talked about some of the things that's going to benefit the district as well. Certainly, we want improved fill rates. Parallel education was the only group that guaranteed 95%. And if they do not attain that 95%, they're willing to reduce their rate. And out of the three companies, well, the two other companies plus them, they were the only ones that feel so strongly that they're able to attain this, that they're putting their good name on the line and the fee that they charge us in order to say, yes, we can do this. And I feel very confident in their capability after working with them and talking with them extensively and asking them questions. I feel very passionate about our subs. I've worked with our subs ever since I started working for the district. I've developed relationships that go way back. And I ask them the question, are you going to take care of our subs as well as I do? And I firmly believe they'll do a better job because they're able to devote their whole day to it, whereas I'm not able to give our subs that kind of attention. And another thing that appealed to me about them is that they have connections to Stevens Point, Bree, who I'll be introducing to you, graduated from UW at Point. They represent the culture and they understand the dynamics of our area. And, and they understand the difficulty it is in attracting and retaining our substitutes. So I felt they were very capable and prepared. One of the things additionally that they can do for us, which I felt was very important, if you're a retired teacher, you understand that if you substitute for the district you retire from, you're subject to a restriction of 880 hours a year. That goes away for our retirees. They can sub as much as they want because we're not the employer. Parallel education would be the employer. And we've looked into that extensively to make sure there's no loopholes or any little glitches that would say that that could happen. But it's totally legit. They will do, they will do personal, one-on-one interviews. There isn't any such thing in my book, and I'm very glad to hear in their way of doing business, that there's a sub list, that all you have to do is sign up. No. It's a very important role that we cannot operate our school district without good subs. And they have to go through the regular hiring process that everybody else does. We have to find quality subs. And parallel education does the same thing. They introduce face-to-face with all of the candidates. But they can do more. They can go out there to job fairs. They can get into the colleges. And they're going to talk about all of the things that they do in order to attract our substitutes and be able to market what they have so that people know that, hey, you know, maybe something is the right thing for me to do. And, and show that it's something that would, might be attractive where people didn't think about that. They can definitely take the payroll burden off of us. Our payroll department is very full between summer learning and everything else that we have to do, and Bob can attest to this. If they didn't have to do the substitute payroll, which it is very intense, I do part of it, I give it to them, they input it again, it's, there's a lot of labor involved. So if we can offset that and not have to do it, then they can be working on other things, which would be great. We wouldn't have to do Affordable Care Tracking and all of these things. But the big point is, is if they're not our employee, we do not have to pay the FICA, we do not have to pay Workman's Comp claims, we talked about the unemployment, and we do not have to pay the retirement. So it truly, for the markup that parallel education requires, it would be a wash. So we just think it's kind of a one-way thing. So having said that, I can talk all night about subs, but I won't. I'd like to introduce to you Tammy Rosenberg, who's the Chief Operating Officer, and Bree Skemp, who is the Recruiter Account Manager of our district. And we're going to talk more about their business.
Thank you, Carla.
Certainly.
And thank you for allowing us to come and present for the meeting. So, oh, over here?
I think, right? Because we...
Either one.
You're the one.
You're the one.
Okay. So we're a parallel education division.
Oh, so maybe somebody else has to move it?
Here we go. Just tap it.
There it goes. There it goes.
So a little bit about us. We are a Wisconsin-based corporation. So we have been doing substitute teaching services for 20 years now. We've been in business for over 32. So our owner started it in 1987, November. And we're a staffing company. Watching the laws progress as they did with Affordable Care, I could just tell that. And, and watching the trends, the ups and flows with education, number of people that were going into it, coming out of colleges with education degrees, just saw that there was going to be a time where the need for substitute teachers was going to, there was going to be a need for the school districts. And so we ended up getting in, kind of dabbling in it a little bit in the Mawat theory, and it just has progressed since then. We're now in seven states, so doing this. Here are the states that we're in right now, the six states, I apologize. Provide approximately 1,500 substitute teachers and parent professionals daily. It's an all-inclusive service, so there are no extra fees. So what we charge you for the daily rate or the hourly rate for this sub is what you pay. There's no start-up cost, there's no cost to anything more than, than just what the subs work, is what you'd be invoiced for. Our self-connect system, it will integrate with Skyward, which is something that we're also doing for the Stevens Point School District, and making it very easy. So what will happen with that, and I can, if you have more questions, I can answer those, but to make it as simplistic as possible, our system will, they can just go into Skyward, there's a button they can push that will say, yes, I need a sub, or no, I don't need a sub. It'll either register as no sub required, or it will register, it will come into our system, and we'll automatically fill it from there, and then it will come back through. So it's a really easy process. Okay. And then just some of our team, just, it's, I wanted you to know that there's more folks behind this even than just Bree and myself. So Paul Rosson is our Regional Director of Operations for Wisconsin. Bree is our accountant. David Aviles is our Branch Manager for Wisconsin. Spent around for five years, started at the bottom as a dispatcher, has moved his way up. So very, very competent staff. We have a Training Coordinator, a National Recruiting Coordinator, a Marketing Coordinator, somebody that takes care of our payroll, and then somebody that oversees our Dispatching Center. Our Dispatching Center is, operates from Sunday through Friday. They come in Sunday afternoon at 3 o'clock and work until 10:00, 10:30. They open again at 4:00 in the morning and work until 10:00, 10:30. That's Monday through Thursday. And then on Fridays, they open at 4:00 and they're there until 5:00. So if anybody at any time has their, they go to a soccer game in the evening, they go home, child comes up to them at 8:30 at night and says, I don't feel good. And, and that person thinks, I'm probably not going to be in tomorrow. They can literally call at that point, or text us, or, we have a mobile app that I'll show you, but at that point, they can put in their absence, we can get it filled, and that automatically goes out to the school so they know exactly who's coming in in the morning to fill that position. So they're not waiting until the morning to try to get that position filled as a last minute. I'm sorry.
I think, I didn't do it. I didn't touch it.
Show me the one before that. Was that that one? Okay, awesome. We can go to self-connect then. Okay, perfect. So I just wanted you to know that, to the shorts of our district. So self-connect, our system, very, very similar to ASOP, very user-friendly. Probably the best thing about it is that we have a mobile app that works with the smartphone. So for the subs and the teachers, they can log on with the app, it's free of charge. They can put their absence in through that login, and it will ding through to the subs. They can see the position, they can grab it, it dings back to the teacher to let them know that their position's been filled. So that's probably the one component about it that our subs and our teachers have both voiced all year that they love about the, and it's at no cost, like you said, so it's just... But for those that don't have a smartphone, aren't, you know, comfortable with it, there's still the phone calls that they can make to the office or the dispatching office, they can use their computer, login via, so if they're on their web, you know, they're on their computer already working, they can log in through the administrative portal, put in their absence, it goes, again, right through to us. Our folks grab it, they get an email back saying, we have your position, we get it filled, email goes back out, it's been filled and who it's been filled with. So very, very easy system to use. And this is what would be connected to Skyward. So again, just a push of a button. Okay. And again, no additional cost, so you'd actually save money.
We would save money because currently we have to pay up annual subscription rate for Frontline. They have increased our rates 12% a year, and this year we were invoiced $18,000. So again...
Is Frontline like ASOP or...
It is ASOP.
Oh, it is, okay.
It offers, it's a platform, it offers several different things, but ASOP is the absence management system that we use.
Yeah. So very user-friendly, and we would come in and we would, we would train all the folks on it, but literally, it would take them 15 minutes to learn. Super easy, super user-friendly, very easy system. And in the system, it houses all your information. So if you want to report and you want to see, let's say... So if you want to report and you want to see, let's say there was a fourth-grade teacher at a school, and they used a sub a month earlier, and they couldn't remember the sub's name, but they really liked that person, they came in, they ran the class well, there's a history that they can go back to in the system, look it right up. And if they struggle with it, all the dispatchers in the local office, they'll help. They'll go in, they'll look it up, and they'll say, oh, that was so-and-so. Oh, would you like that person back? Absolutely. They can make their VIP list, the subs can make their VIP list. So anything that they're used to doing, they can do in this system. There's exclusion lists, so if you don't want something back, because it doesn't always work out, you can have that as well. So... Okay. And this just kind of shows how the mobile app works. So this is the mobile app for substitutes. So then this is all the information. The nice thing that's in this one is they have the ability, if they don't have a ride, to connect to Uber or Lyft, and they also have a built-in GPS. So if they're unfamiliar, they can absolutely put it in, and the GPS will take them right to where the school is.
So there's no more, I don't have a car, my car broke down, we've figured out that solution for you, so...
Right. And then it looks very similar, but this is what it is for the teachers. So then they can just submit their absence, it will track the past and future absences, they can request a specific sub, they can even add in their lesson plans on the mobile app. If they have them in their records, they can then grab them and tap them. Okay, some of our recruiters...
Sure, yeah. We have a lot of platforms, including ZipRecruiter, Indeed, Craigslist, Monster, you know, that sort of thing. But what we're also really good about is being one with the community. So I think we do a really fantastic job of going out into the community, we get in with the area of job fairs and the career fairs, and we have people back at our home office thinking outside the box, where they are calling the Chamber of Commerce, and we're getting in, and I'm sitting out at Belts on a Sunday night, you know, that sort of stuff. So we really get active in the community, and we try to really think of areas that people might not think of a job, such as Belts. But Belts is like that hub in Stevens Point where you get every walk of life. So who knows? You might have a retired grandma who is looking for something part-time here or Stevens Point, you know, that sort of thing. So we do a good job of kind of coming into the community and pulling from there. Shop goes going out of business, you know, we think to kind of match up with there and see if anybody there would be a good fit, at least for our flexibility, so...
We do that a lot. We get ourselves ingrained in the community there. If somebody is going out of business or downsizing, we go and reach out to their HR department and say, okay, well, in the meantime, maybe they are a marketing director, but maybe they like to teach business at the high school a couple days a week while they look for another job. Or going into companies that then have the qualifications for folks that maybe never considered subbing, and that's what I think the key is. There's a lot of people out there that it doesn't, it's not on their radar, they just don't think about it until you bring it up and say, hey, this is a nice alternative, it will get you out, it will get you networking with other people. It's a short-term fix to something that you can do while you're in a job search, looking for something else, because you have people that may have not been in the job market for a while, and so that whole component is scary. So now to be able to go out, have a reason to get up, get dressed, we've had a number of people come to us in those situations where they are professionals, they had never even thought of it. And so they're great, they make great subs. And some have even gone as far as to say, hey, you know, I'm going to go get my teaching degree, I love it. And so they actually get hired by the schools. I mean, we've had our fair share of that, so yeah.
Two questions. What is the percentage of people at sub that have a teaching degree? Do you know that?
I can tell you what ours is. It's, and it's gone down quite a bit over the course of the last couple of years, which is why the laws have changed like they have in almost every state. So the state of Wisconsin is no different. They changed the laws this last year. We're at about almost forty percent of our folks, and that's across the board. So you take six states and that kind of thing. It's, everybody has to have their sub license, so nothing changes. The criteria that's set, you know, for Los Angeles Public Schools and for the state of Wisconsin, we follow all of that. But yeah, it has...
So they all have bachelor's degrees?
They don't have to anymore, have a bachelor's degree. They changed that last year.
Associates are higher now.
Yeah.
Okay.
They made a shortage, and then they lowered the requirement.
Lowered the standard. Right, right. So here's the good and bad with that. It does open up folks that have their associate and that kind of thing. That face-to-face interview for us is really key, because we ask questions in that face-to-face interview, looking for particular answers. You can have somebody with a bachelor's that we choose not to employ, just based on the conversations that they have. I've also found that people that have associate's degree, in some cases, are a little bit more willing to put their arms around those classrooms and those kids, and are willing to do a little bit more. I don't know if I agree with it.
So I imagine your training is pretty important, too?
It's very important.
For classroom climate and, you know, legal...
It has just increased because of that. We also increased it because when you're trying to, for lack of a better word, manufacture subs, go out and find folks that haven't subbed before, you have to really get them acquainted with how to work in the classroom and what to expect. And if you're working with any districts in urban environments, it's a whole different entity within itself. So difference between big school districts, rural school districts. So, for example, we work with Bullin School District, three schools, but, you know, deer hunting, the school closes down, for Pete's sake, you know? Somebody in the city wouldn't even fathom that. So it's just learning those components, and then building your sub pool to recognize how that district works. And that's why we get entrenched with the community, and that's why we have local presence and so forth, because you can't do that without it. You just can't.
One point I'd like to make as well is that we're not talking about just teachers either. We're talking about paraprofessionals, we're talking about food services, and we're talking about teachers, so...
That's good to keep in mind.
Yeah. And when I talk about an aggregate percentage of how we dropped, that's a total percentage, but I can tell you that what really drives that drop would be our paraprofessionals. We really struggled this year finding paras that would work in the classroom. So, I mean, we can start looking at different groups, but visually, it was pretty obvious. But yes, we still, we struggled across the board, but I think that that was our group that we really need to focus on as well.
I've got a question about this. First of all, when I went through this whole presentation, I've been saying for a long time, when is that going to be out there? When are companies going to be thinking about that? Because of the shortage of teachers, because of the shortage of paras, and like you said, Carla, I can go back and take a look at data that I've had, paras, you can't find them, good paras. And you can't find good kitchen people, and you go right down the line. And this is something that's going to take away from you, and you don't have to be following up on that. Or a secretary in every building that has to find the substitutes and things of that fashion. You're going to be taking care of licensure, because we'd always have to go into the licensure, the DPI, you have to stay on top of all of that. You're going to take care of that. You'll be responsible. We'll be coming back at you to take a look at that. My biggest question, after all that, the fact that you have insurance, the fact that you have retirement, and I saw that, and wow. How is the principal of every school going to know how many subs are going to have in a day? Because as a principal, that's the first thing I came in, is that who do we have for subs? How many subs do we have? What's the list look like? When are the principals going to get that?
So they'll get it twice. So when our dispatchers end at the end of the night, we have a report that goes out called a Subcast Report, that goes directly to any of our end-users. So if your admin person in your office and the principal are two folks that want to know who's going to be entering the building, they will get this, they will get the email that has everything on it in the Subcast Report. So it will be the teacher that's out, the grade that they teach, the sub that's coming in, it will have everything on it. They will get that again at six o'clock in the morning, the next morning, because every once in a while, you have a sub that wakes up that's sick, and so then that job reopens. When that happens, our dispatchers call the school and let them know that the sub canceled out, but we're working on getting it refilled for them. We will not stop working on it. So even if school starts at, let's say, eight o'clock, if we can get somebody over there for, you know, by nine, we'll let the school know, we have somebody that can get there by nine, can you cover the class for an hour? And then they're good with that. So those reports come out twice to give them any kind of updates. And then everything else after that, after that report goes out, is communication through our dispatching office.
Okay, so you're taking care of making sure the communication to the administration, so...
Right.
That was always a concern for me, is I don't want to be blindsided when I come into a day...
Right.
Where I don't know where my subs are, how many do I have?
Yes. And we're really honest with the schools. So if we, we'll tell them, we have gone through the list, nobody's answered, we're going through again, you know what I mean? Just so that they can start making preparations if they don't have a sub. As soon as we get one, we will call the school and say, we have somebody that can get here by this time, can you use them for a half-day? Ninety-nine percent of the time, they'll like absolutely send them.
My follow-up question probably would be for the administration, then, is where are the sub plans going to be? Is it going to be digital planning? Is it going to be something that's on the website expectation? Are you going to be involved with that, or are you going to be involved with that? A lot of questions that I would ask that you do right now, who's going to pick on that?
We're going to work as a team. I mean, definitely, we're still here to handle that part of it, on what do we do? What can we do better? But typically, sub plans are either going to be placed in the office, or they'll be placed on the desk where it's visible to the substitute. If there's time, they can actually put them out there, when I say out there, on the...
Their website.
Software, the website, so that the sub could look at it. That's not always feasible, especially with a late absence. If the teacher, or the para, or whoever waits too long, there's not time for the substitute to review the online lessons. And so I always tell them, just go to the school, there'll also be a hard copy for you to look at. And that's what they would do.
I know I have a lot of questions on this, because subs, that's been all of our problems for the last, well, we're back to Act Ten.
Yes.
That is when it all began. And my question, then, do the subs get supplied with a computer so that they can come in? If the teachers have it digitized, their lesson plan, so that there's a smooth transition to the sub, are things going to be done digitally there, or are they going to have laptops, iPads, so that they can pick up on that?
Most of them do. Most of them will be done right with their iPads. We don't supply that. What we do supply, though, is we have a library of lesson plans based on age groups. So you have pre-K, kindergarten through first, that kind of thing. So we always tell the subs, just be prepared, grab something off of the website so that you have something to keep the students busy, something that is for their age group, that where they can still be learning, and that way then, if it's just for that one day and the teacher, it was a situation where they didn't have time to leave a lesson plan, or they were in a pickle, this way then, they're at least accomplishing something, and the sub then can leave that the next day for the teacher to say, this is what I reviewed, and it coincides with the age group or the classroom, whether it's middle school math or high school biology, it coincides with what they have going on.
You know, I have to say, though, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, it doesn't happen very often. We're very meticulous, and we handle that. We're very specific with our teachers, that you have to have a plan. You know, if it's just a plan that's a month out, but something as an emergency backup, because we don't expect our substitutes to come in without a plan and sit down and teach what you would want them to do. And if they're, if by some weird reason that they don't have the plan, there's other cooperative teachers in that school that can assist the sub, the principal is there to assist the sub, and the principal will know that there's not a plan. Or if it's middle school or high school, there's a department that they can get help from. So the last case, the last resort would be that we would expect a sub to pull something out of their briefcase to say, this is what we're going to do today, because there's not a plan. I'm sorry.
It's fine. I want to go back to Jim's question here, because he raises a good point. My understanding is that the schools are equipped with laptops and iPads for substitutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then how is the interplay with that? Because if they were employed by the Wausau School District as substitutes, and something happens using that iPad or laptop, that's going to be different, the legal ramifications being employed by you?
So they can use your equipment. If something happens, we cover it. So it's all part of our insurance. So it's all covered. So as the employer of record, we pay for everything. So they're insured through us, whether it's Workers' Comp, with the unemployment, we pay them all the taxes, we keep track of everything for Affordable Care Act. So all of that is done, and we submit that as your substitute teacher supplier. So you don't have to worry about any of that. If you want those reports for your records, you're more than welcome to have them. But if somebody should have a laptop and drop it and break it, we cover that, it's in our insurance, so...
What about liability for issues that would extend beyond that? If they used a device inappropriately, or got into a...
Yes. So there's all kinds, in your packets, and I'm sorry, we've put kind of a lot of information there, but you'll see a list of all our trainings that we do, but you'll see an employee handbook that's towards the, I think it's the last piece. And in that is all of our rules and regulations, our policies, expectations. And so if there are grounds for termination, there are grounds for going through a process of termination. If there's something where a sub comes in and does something to us, they're terminated. We also will come and assist HR in, if the sub has to be represented in any way, we will come and take that burden off the district.
So is there a whole harness, then, between us and you, in case there were any?
No, there's not, because there's real lines that identify, whenever you use a firm like ours for any position, you've got a little bit of co-employment, but because there's such definitive lines between who is the employer of record, who's paying the bills, who's paying the, or who's paying the paycheck, who's paying the taxes and so forth, when it comes to things like that, it's your standard, our policies to follow through. So it's the district standard, it's the policy that parallel has to uphold as it's representing parallel working at your district.
So the risk is on you?
The risk is on me.
Okay.
So it looks like administratively, there's a lot of advantages for us in this. So far as the teachers go, concerned from what we have in the materials that we had for tonight, it looks like not very much really changes, only a few small things to the advantage of teachers. But for the most part, that proceeds much the same way from their perspective.
Very much the same.
And thinking about the subs themselves, particularly with our subs who are retirees, I think in most cases, the very first thing they're going to ask is, well, did the rate change? Are we going to pay differently per day? Can you, and I know you have to stay competitive, so you have an incentive to pay market rates, but can you say anything about whether the rates would stay the same for our subs, or whether they'd be heading up a little bit or down a little bit? What would you anticipate?
So for your retirees, Carla, help me if I'm explaining this incorrectly, they're paid a rate, and then they're also given insurance?
No.
Nope?
Okay, let me explain. The rates are based upon what we're willing to pay as a district.
Right.
And then they have a markup on what those sub rates will be for their costs, which includes their costs would be their insurances, the FICA, and all the other costs that we now don't have to pay. We have talked about what do we do with a retired teacher, because in the past, a retired teacher that took our health insurance was able to work and then pay for their health insurance on a tax-free basis. was able to work and then pay for their health insurance on a tax-free basis. That's a big deal to them, for those that do it. So what we talked about as administratively within our own team is we probably are going to have to give the retired teacher a higher rate of pay to offset the FICA that now that they're going to have to pay. So we were talking about allowing these substitute teachers that are retirees a different rate of pay, which they've been asking for anyway. I don't know if you heard anything about that, but because they're our best subs, quite honestly. They're, they're, they've been here, they know things about our school. They're much more productive than any other kind of a sub. So we were thinking most likely of putting them at, say, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, they pay hourly, so we have to break that down by an eight-dollar a day of what does that equate? But roughly in our terms, we would be looking at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for that group. The rest of the subs are going to be paid at a hundred and five plus the 2.48% increase that we already talked about, which I don't know in my mind what that looks like yet. Or on a Friday, a hundred and fifteen plus the 2.48%. Or if they, we have a bonus program that we also do, that if they work twenty times during a school quarter, then they're eligible for the a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus the 2.48. Okay, so all I'm saying is the retirees do not have to wait to get the bonus to be at that one twenty-five plus the 2.48%. Does that make sense?
So you're, so the intent is to pay the subs next year the same daily rates roughly that they're getting now with all the markup that we already approved? So our expense is the district is whatever the markup is?
Yes.
So what's that? And how much is that going to equal?
Twenty-eight percent.
Which would be annually?
In dollars?
Yeah, yeah. What, what's, what's this cost us next year?
Million dollars of subs?
Yeah.
Million dollars of subs, two-hundred-eight thousand dollars. And keep in mind, the million dollars that are on our payroll right now, we pay seven percent for WRS, which we wouldn't have to. We pay seven point six-five percent for FICA, we wouldn't have to. We pay, probably not too often unemployment insurance, but not too often. Work comp premiums and risk exposure would go down. So you're capturing about half of that in hard, honest-to-goodness dollars saved that we don't have to pay anymore. And then the other amount is the work that they're going to be doing instead of the rest of us.
So a hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly?
Yeah.
And can I ask, what do you pay your call center people?
Oh, anywhere, usually they start at fifteen and go from there based on longevity.
Okay.
Imagine?
Fourteen ninety-nine, yeah.
There's a reason for that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if I may, I had a conversation with the board of the Marathon County Retired Educators Association last week before, about this topic and shared with them some of the basic and, and they didn't hit me. Actually, they were, they were kind of excited particularly about the, the annuity and some of the benefits that, that the retirees would be eligible for.
Another thought too, with the teachers and the retired teachers particularly,
that cap of eight-hundred-and-eighty hours, like I said, would go away. So would the seventy-five day waiting period, that they have to wait after they retire before they can start.
Do we have retired teachers hitting that cap?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And then they have to stop.
They would want to go beyond that cap.
They, they want, yeah.
Do they have to just stop one day and then start again?
No. They can, they can have sub the rest of the school year, once they hit that.
And that's not only our retirees, retirees from other districts coming here. If you're at WRS employees, you're limited.
I've got a couple of questions. If you were going to get into the timeline and I don't see that they'll be answered afterwards. So just, what is the closest district to us that you guys service?
Stevens Point. We just signed with Stevens Point.
Okay, so that's far enough away in my book. Otherwise, I mean
Just wondering about competition.
Yeah, you're going to be, you'd be competing with yourself if you get within
I think you guys are going to have a really big advantage and we've talked about this with being so, in my opinion, close to Stevens Point. Because you are going to get, you have the advantage of having the December graduates and the May graduates and a lot of them come from over here. So I mean, we were all just, actually, we all met at the, at the district, or I'm sorry, at the job fair at the college a few weeks ago. And there are quite a few people who end up moving over here and think, "Oh, I wish I could work over for Wausau School District rather than drive into Stevens Point." So I think you guys have a really big advantage because a lot of people do come from still this area versus maybe moving back down to Milwaukee or something like that.
That's helpful. Thank you. The, the other question, one of the other questions is, your fill rate of ninety-five percent on average, where are you at for larger districts? Because it, it's easy to obtain that if you have, right, a district of small.
Right.
Like, so if you have a school district our size, what is your average? Is it still ninety-five?
Mm-hmm, it is, it is. So we maintain that ninety-five percent with, with districts that are your size. Give you an example, Indianapolis Public Schools, huge district, three thousand plus teachers, seventy-two schools, just massive, right? So we work with them. To give you an example, what we do with them is, and, and every school district is the same. Monday through Friday, ebb and flow is pretty well, give or take, you know, fifteen or twenty subs. Fridays come and you could double or triple it, right? So with IPS, it, it really escalates on Fridays. I, I mean, it's crazy. So what we did with them is to maintain that ninety-five percent. We looked at Monday through Thursday and said, "Here's what we'll guarantee for you. This is the number." So for them, we guarantee a hundred and seventy-five subs a day from August through December and then it jumps up to two-hundred-and-ten from January through June. And the reason we did that is because I can't guarantee, I can't keep a pool when your numbers escalate to three times what they're asking me to have. So I can, I can guarantee two-hundred-and-ten, I can guarantee two-hundred-and-forty probably. But when they escalate to four-hundred and something on a Friday, I can't keep that. You have to be realistic. I can't keep a pool like that. For districts your size, we can maintain that ebb and flow even on Fridays. You might escalate thirty or forty subs. I can keep that in a pool. It's when they escalate to a hundred and fifty on one day. And, and the other days, they're running at, you know, a hundred and then on Friday they jump to two-fifty. That's the ebb and flow that makes it difficult.
So for us, it's ninety-five percent. It would be the night, the Monday through Friday without the spikes. And what would the, the performance guarantee that you offer if you don't hit ninety-five, the rate drops?
Yeah, by one percent.
One percent?
On the markup. So what we would do is we would take that month and whatever you build out, we would take one percent off of that, that billing.
So our total, lady, you would be one point two-eight million roughly, right? Because we're not paying you just the market, we're paying you for each hour.
Correct.
It, it's, we're, we're paying them one point two-eight roughly.
And we set the rates on the subs, so whatever we do, whatever we did in the past, we're going to keep doing. If the rates need adjusting, we'll adjust them to, to then they get twenty-eight percent margin on any of these years.
So it's a one percent performance guarantee, if you will, for the following year?
No, it's done monthly, monthly, monthly.
Oh, each month?
So if we don't need it, then whatever you build out for that month, we would then deduct that one percent and give you a credit on that for the month, yeah.
All right, otherwise the rates are just passed through, Bob, from us to them?
Yep, and we would pay it instead of through payroll where we have dozens of codes per event. It would be purchase service and one code per event. Without the FICA, without the WRS, without the work comp, without the frontline costs, with several of those costs.
Okay. So then what is the process also if a, if a teacher can request kind of a VIP list? What is the feedback loop if they want to request a non-VIP list? Like, we don't want this person back for whatever reason.
Yeah, that's the DNA of us. Do not assign.
Do not assign. So they just tell us and we, they can no longer see that school. And if it's, if it's something that they don't, you don't want back to the district, then they can't to the district.
We are, that's something we already do anyway. It's very, very similar to what we probably handle it through a sub.
And it could be individually too, not to that teacher.
Yeah, and I've had schools too where they like this sub, but he's been in second grade and it's just not working out. They'll DNA him from second grade, not the whole school, because they're willing to give him a chance, maybe fifth grade and on or, you know, so on. So I've definitely had that.
Do we get that report that somebody's been requested not to return? So that if we get, because we have many buildings, if we get spots where, that we can decide not to?
Yeah, that's, I mean, if you decide that he, he or she is not coming back to the district at all, they won't be able to come to any of your schools. But if your school A over here says, "We don't want him," but school B through G is okay, then they're able to see those.
But does, if A says, "I don't want him," but B doesn't know that, would school B know that he's been disinvited?
No, because, I mean, they could, it could be for any various reasons. You know what I mean? We don't want a taint, a potentially good sub who might work out really well in school B over here just because school A just wasn't a good fit and then happens, I mean, you know, just like a job.
Well, everybody has personalities.
Everybody ebbs and flows in different ways.
But there's got to be a threshold where we have, you know.
It depends on the egregiousness of whatever it was.
Yes.
I mean, if it's really bad, then yes, they'd be terminated. But if it's just not a good fit, we did the same thing.
And that's what I was going to ask. What is your, what is your turnover rate, if you will? Meaning termination for what you would consider to be cause?
Oh, yeah, it's very low. It, it has to be under five percent. But every once in a while, you get somebody that just doesn't do something bright.
Sure.
And it's grounds for termination. We really kind of use the three strikes, you're out in a, in a number of situations. So if somebody is DNA'd from three schools, the first time they're, they're given a verbal, you know, "This didn't work out for this reason." And if we feel like it's something they can improve on, we talk to them about how they can improve. Documentation is put into their personnel file with us. The second time it's written, they have to come in, they sign off, this is a written warning. This is your second time that you've been asked not to return to a school. The third time, they're terminated. Same thing goes with tardies. First time a verbal, second time a written, third time, you can't work with us. So there could be a sub that, that a school really likes or the district really likes, but we have to follow a protocol because we can't let somebody be tardy ten times because a school loves them and somebody else is terminated after three and they're attending the same school. So we have to keep our processes consistent as well and that's how, how we do that.
So what are you going to do with the current pool of subs? Because you mentioned that you personally interview every sub. And I'm not sure, how many, how large is that current pool?
Two-hundred-and-seventy total.
Okay, so are they grandfathered in? Are they, are you, are they going to be your employees? Are you going to interview each one?
We are. So we can do it in bulk and, and meaning we can have a few sessions where we do orientations and talk to them and, and we have a group of our folks here that do that. But they're our employee now, so they have to fill everything out for us.
I, I think what you're asking though, are you going to have a personal one-on-one discussion with them? Or are we going to grandfather our total group in and just do the orientation and kind of get them going?
Um, it'll probably be the latter. It'll probably be more of an orientation. But we do want to be able to meet everybody and take their ID and talk to them a little bit and that kind of thing because we have to take the correct ID for their I-nines and W fours. So, so I, so while it probably won't be as in-depth of an interview because they're already given the stamp of approval from the district, we still need to talk to everybody, at least one-on-one.
And that's a paid orientation, so we should smooth things over.
You know, not to marginalize the other subs that we're going to be bringing in. Obviously cafeteria, the paras, things of that fashion. I'm seeing the real plus on this side and I'm going to just speak from my point of view, the plus on it. It's the fact that we're going to be able to have our veteran teachers come back more than eight-hundred hours. That in itself is going to increase the educational aspect for the students more than what we could offer them because they got cut off when we need them the most in the spring. So now we're going to start seeing very good education taking place when staff members, faculty members are no longer going to be there. We're going to have good teachers. That's the big key. And that's a benefit to our students.
And there are other questions. I had, I, I saw the anonymous call from the superintendent in there, but I assume we've done reference calls with other districts?
Yes. And then just for the fact that Stevens Point has, went, they've gone ahead and, and they went from teachers on call to parallel education. They spoke very highly of them. That spoke very, that was a very positive.
And how long have you been servicing Point?
They just started.
So we don't, so we don't have any direct feedback on performance, uh, Point has received from them? Have we talked to anybody that they've been, that you guys have worked with for a number of years?
Um, no, but we can.
Because that's really
I'm really not too concerned, but we certainly can.
No, I, I understand that. And marketing's great, but really a reference is somebody who has a relationship for a while.
This is an annual contract, correct?
Yes, it's an annual contract.
So we can come back next year and
We can take it back and we're in place to do that if we have to and, and they understand.
No, I, I, let me be clear. I support this. I think this is great. The work, the last thing we would want to do is to take it back because that's not good for anybody. All I'm saying is that let's talk to somebody who's been using them for one year, for five years, whatever, and get the perspective on how the service has been over time. To me, that's important.
And what kind of identification do we have for these teachers? I mean, we have district IDs. I don't know, do our current subs still just get the little tag that says substitute teacher? Or do they have picture IDs?
That's what we have here and I, I'm not sure if you would have your own or if we would use ours, but that's
Something we would have to verify.
We've had some who like to keep their own, you know, and that's just fine. We can work with that. Otherwise, we have little lanyards that say, "Parallel," you know, substitute teacher, guest teacher.
I want something with a picture and a name and a
Well, they have a picture and a name. We just have to decide who's going to be the badge as far as reproducing and so on. I would just assume that they be part of parallel since you are the employer.
Right. I don't, do we want to brand somebody though, a substitute teacher?
We do now.
I know, but, but, yeah, that's true.
On the first moment.
Ted, did you want an amendment on the motion or did you just want that between this vote?
No, I would just, no, I wouldn't, I'm not going to take it that far. I just think it's good stewardship if we would, sure.
So I have a I have a question on the, and I don't want to offend anybody in the HR office or business office, but so we're taking on an extra hundred and forty thousand dollar expense by taking a lot of work away from, I thought we said it was two-eighty, you said about half.
Well, I said approximately half because the seven point whatever and the seven point six-five is already over fourteen, so that's already over half. And then frontline's another fourteen thousand dollars. Work comp premiums is another twenty thousand dollars. So you start to get a little bit beyond
You get down to basically a full-time employee with benefits.
Yeah, and I don't have the analysis in front of me. They provided some analysis for us on how we can capture some of the soft costs. Some are more soft than others, but some of them are pretty hard. The ones I mentioned off the top of my head are very hard. I mean, those are real savings. Maybe off the top of your head, you can list a couple other savings that
Well, I just, you know where I'm going with it. We're adding, we're adding six figures of administrative expense while taking time away from administration. So how are we, how are we matching those two up? That we're, we're basically adding a full-time employee expense to administration while at the same time taking time away from administration? So are we at a point where we think that we are so overworked that we couldn't keep up with it and we're understaffed?
We think this will be a better service, no doubt, you know, for our own, excuse me, our own substitutes, our own students and our own staff. Plus, you know, as you all know, we have an emphasis of trying to improve employee relations. That's where really that time's going to go. The time that's not spent, you know, by Carla, Tammy, other and, you know, business office, a lot of that's going to be reinvested back into improving player relations.
So part of the sale of this is saying that we're going to be paying whatever the variance that you're talking about to improve our fill rate by at least six percent based on this past year?
Yes.
Well, we've got, you know, an increased fill rate, you know, more retired teachers, so I can see all those piles too. But at the same time, when in tight budgets and every time we tell somebody, "No," because we can't afford twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, people are going to ask, "We just added six figures to the administration expense." Where is the time coming from?
Here's another pretty hard savings that's hard to peg. This is a benefit to our current employees, or considering retirement. Some teachers may be putting off retirement because they don't have a health benefit in retirement. Putting off retirement because they're up against the eight hundred and eighty hours per year. They want to work more and they can't afford to work less, and they keep on teaching. I've had a couple of conversations with teachers who are on the verge of retiring. They want to do something for the district, they maybe want a sub, maybe at the end of their career teaching. This would give them incentive to keep on teaching in a different way. And we know the turnover of retirees versus new employees and the cost differential. So we could capture some savings there, where they're maybe teaching one less year than they would have, or two less years than they would have. This is a benefit for current employees. So Dr. Hill mentions morale and some of the things that we can do for employees. We're doing this for current employees, because those current employees are going to be former employees. And the ones that do it through the normal course, through retirement, they're going to be normal employees that maybe want to keep on working for us. And providing a different employer to do that, go beyond the eight eighty and get health benefits. So, these incremental, small amounts do chisel away at that one hundred thousand dollars.
The other thing I look at is, I know that there's other employee groups, but when I think about teachers and I think about learning minutes for kids, having a ninety-five percent fill rate means more kids learning. I mean, I've, I work in a school in another district, and we have had many days where I'm greeted by an email first thing in the morning, we're five subs short, we're six subs short. You scramble and you make sure it happens, but kids aren't doing what they would have been doing if you had a teacher in the classroom following the lesson plan. And this is probably what's best for kids.
Carla, I'm seeing the timeline here for transitioning the current substitutes, which looks like that would take it through the end of July. But what about the teachers and the staff? When would they receive training on what they need to do on their end?
I would anticipate in August first, because they'll be coming back at that particular point. And we'll be doing a lot of, it's really quiet at the beginning of the school year, fortunately. And it gives us a little bit of breathing room to be able to do a lot of this training as they're just coming back, because at that point, we don't have a lot of attendance issues other than maybe a few long-term sub positions. So really, things don't start ramping up to what we call normal trends until about the middle of October.
Well, how much time do you think is necessary for the teacher staff end?
Our training is very, it's very, very user-friendly. I mean, like, twenty minutes, you know. Plus, we stick around, you know, if somebody needs extra one-on-one. I mean, essentially, we make sure everybody can get it on their phones, you know. We make sure everybody is able to log in, so that's why we'll ask for, like, the teacher roster list and the school calendars ahead of time. We'll make sure it's all imported into our internal system that swings over to the sub pick system. Make sure everybody is able to get on properly, that they're in the right credentials, you know, that they're showing that they're in, as a teacher, not accidentally as an admin. We make sure everything like that is set up right. And then, you know, we walk through it like this, and it's three, four buttons, so it's super easy. Okay, like, they can't miss that.
We can also be part of the meetings as teachers are coming back. I've received the commitment from Parallel Education that we'll do whatever it takes. And so we've got to sit down and go through maybe a couple of days that we're going to spend at the high schools, the little school, visit the elementary school, maybe a first staff meeting, just to make sure that everybody understands and they go through a very quick training with them. And the same would hold true for the staff at the school as well. But currently, they're called campus users on ASOP. But whatever their role would be as far as support for the school, they would also have to have the training.
And again, same thing with admin training, it's fifteen, twenty minutes. So I think they have four buttons.
Bob, if I did your math right, I came up with, it's about sixty thousand dollars. When you add up all your hard savings minus the licensing cost and all that, just for board perspective, it looks like it's about sixty.
That's how you was figuring out his calculator.
Yeah, I've got, I don't know who knows. I've got two hundred and eighty thousand dollars going to them, and I've got sixty-five thousand five hundred coming back in WRS, seventy-six thousand five hundred coming back in FICA, about eighteen thousand in frontline, about twenty thousand in work comp, a hard dollars of a hundred and eighty thousand, so it takes it to one hundred. And one hundred would be an employee that earns fifty, five, sixty, because benefits would gross you up to one hundred. So, but you're right, it's full-time.
Yeah, you know, I bring it up because when we talk about morale, and like it or not, when administrative expenses go up, morale does not throughout the rest of the district. So I think, I think the educational side of this is a pretty easy sell, it sounds like. I mean, everything sounds great from your side of things. I just think we need to be prepared to answer, what are we going to do with this extra time now? We're going to be doing this, and this, and this, and this, and, you know, this is why, this is what's going to benefit the district. You know, we're going to have more time to recruit new teachers, we're going to have more time to do this, and we're going to be more responsive to you because we'll have, you know, you got to go down that.
You're right.
Right, you're absolutely right. We have a very detailed, extensive strategic plan that fits into our overall strategic plan, and there's a lot of time spent to do all of the things that you just talked about, plus some additional things.
And the subs should like it, because we're planning on keeping the same rate we're going to pay anyway, plus some additional benefits that they'll get, so they should like it. So I really think it's just the, just the budget aspect.
You're right. And one thing I do know is, we're not going to lay off people in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. So you have to have one hundred thousand dollars of efficiencies captured without saving a one hundred thousand. You're not going to lay off part of your job, or do that, part of your job, because now you have more time. We're just going to do more things that you couldn't do otherwise, or do them better.
How many contracts have you guys lost this past year? How many moved to one of your competitors?
Just one. Just one down in Tennessee. Thirteen school districts. It was tough. They, they wanted us to lower our markup down there, and they pay very low in Tennessee for substitute teachers and paras, and I couldn't make the numbers work. And at the end of the day, I still, we're still a business, I still have to, like you, answer somebody's bottom line, and I couldn't make it work, and so, they were sad, we were sad, but they literally had to go with the lower margin.
And I think a lot of this is, we got jammed up really hard between ACT and, and then these laws that don't allow teachers to come back after they retired, and, and the cap on the time. And this is, appears to be something that will help us out, and if it ends up costing us a little bit more administrative, I hope people will understand what we're being for, so.
Question about the trainings that you offer. Are those in-person or are those on webinar?
So, they're both. So what we provide is a summer orientation that our subs are paid for, that is not billed to the district, and we go through any new policies or procedures that might pertain to the district, that we may have changed, that the state may have changed, just so everybody's aware of that, and then we pick one or two trainings that we go through. This year, we're doing suicide prevention is the training for the summer course, and all of that is done in person. Then we have two Saturdays a month where we open up the office and have trainings for anybody that would like to come in. So if somebody wants training on classroom management, if they want training on lesson planning, if they want training on cultural competency or any of our, so we pick one for the month. We have it two times, they can come in, or we have them available online. So if they prefer to do it online, and then we just send them a certificate letting them know that they have passed that training course. Most of them are about forty, forty-five minutes.
I'm sorry, but where is your office located?
So we're going to have an office in Stevens Point, and then we have another office in Milwaukee. Oh, and then we have one in Oakley, and then one in Racine.
We are also going to open up a little bit of room in our department, at least temporarily, so that our subs will not have to travel to Stevens Point.
Right.
So we'll be up here two days a week.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to keep going, or?
I know, I'm sorry, we've exhausted you with questions, you already was done.
So, we do have the timeline in here, and you can, there's one in your packet if you want to take a look at it. I didn't know if you had any questions, but we really do look for opportunities for us to partner and recruit in the area. So our whole focus is to have a presence in Wausau, so that Parallel Education is the place that you go to be a substitute teacher for the Wausau School District. That's the whole goal of how we recruit in the area. And this is our, oh, this is our onboarding. So I have a question. Do you pay for any part of their onboarding, like the FBI fingerprint or anything like that?
No.
You don't. So, I was kind of hoping I could find another prospect. But we do. So what we do is, once a sub works for us for a certain period of time, usually it's ten assignments, we'll reimburse them their onboarding costs, so whatever cost them for their license, their FBI fingerprint and so forth. So we want to say to them, hey, thank you, once we get to ten assignments, we can cover that cost without it hurting us. And we have that in most of our districts as well.
We do pay for their criminal background checks, so that would be savings.
Yeah, so that's on me.
Okay.
So this is everything that they have to have with us, so, and we are an E-Verify company, so everybody would be. Our own subs, so, yeah, like I said, a paid orientation, we have health insurance. We offer some PTO in certain situations. Probably our biggest is, our subs are really into the substitute of the month and the referral bonuses, a lot of that. But we hold a lot of contests too, like, if you pick up three Fridays in a month, you get a fifty-dollar gas card or something like that. So we try to have some fun contests, things like that, so that our, and our subs get involved with it. Bree has done quite a bit. Bree will have a Taco Tuesday at the office and invite all the subs over to have tacos and create some camaraderie that way, and we like to do things like that. So, a little bit more thinking out of the box and trying to build a better rapport with us as, as an organization. Oh, additional. So this is our dispatching, I talked about that earlier. Any customized reports. So if the district is looking for any information, you're having a board meeting and you want to know how the fill rates look, you want to know where your spend is at, we can pull all of that. Everything is just in time, so you can have it literally through the day that you have your meeting. So all of those. They get the employee handbook, you have that. And then just the training is probably the most, most important. And then I think the fact that we'll be connected with your Skyward will be really convenient for yourselves.
Yeah.
To order us all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions?
No.
No.
Okay, then I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of implementing Parallel Education Division Services for outsourcing substitute staffing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, all right. Well, immediately following this meeting is a board workshop. It is open to the public. At this point, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.